We'll call a meeting to order at seven oh three, please stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, good evening, good evening, sorry, we had a meeting prior and it went a little long, apologize for that. With that, Nate, will you call roll?
Of course. Councilmember Schultz?
Here.
Councilmember Bowe?
I know it's off.
Is he absent tonight?
Yes.
Okay, I was wondering who he would be, okay. Uh, councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Geisler?
Here.
Mayor Winchell?
Here. Uh, councilmember Bowe, uh, is feeling under the weather, so he, uh, was a late cancel for us tonight, so, uh, he will not be with us and we hope he gets better soon. Um, next, we will move to, uh, adopting the agenda, or the corrections or additions to the agenda, if not entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by councilmember Schultz.
I'll second.
Second by councilmember Geisler to, uh, adopt the agenda discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries, moves us on to item number five, visitor presentation. I have a couple of them listed here, so I'll start with the order I have. I have, uh, Tobacco Age Health Impact by Dr. Judy Snook. Good evening.
Good evening. We had a lovely conversation a couple of weeks ago, I hope you remember. So, by way of introduction, I'm Dr. Judy Snook, I'm a pediatrician with Metropolitan Pediatric Specialist. I work primarily in our Shakopee office. My husband Bob and I live here in Chaska. We are the proud parents of two Chaska High School grads and we've been here since two thousand two. My purpose tonight is to, um, sort of bring to your attention what I think is a major health crisis among our young people and empower the city council to do something about it. So, obviously, I'm talking about the age at which we can buy tobacco in this community. Um, statewide, the age is twenty-one. As we all know, there are several municipalities that have changed that recently. Minneapolis and then most recently Richfield. Um, and I, um, am here to ask the city council to consider the same. And here's why. So, I'm a pediatrician in Shakopee. I speak with teenagers absolutely every day, primarily from the Shakopee area, but also Prior Lake and Chaska. And for the last couple of years, I've been asking kids about cigarettes and particularly e-cigarettes. And I would say about two years ago, probably fifty percent of the high school students could tell me people that they knew who vaped and a small percent, less than ten percent of middle schoolers could tell me that, of kids that they knew that vaped. This has changed drastically. This has become a health crisis in our teenagers. Um, it is clear to me that absolutely every high school student I talk to can name by name at least one person who vapes or jewels. It is absolutely true in the middle school as well. Kids as young as twelve and fourteen are telling me that they have tried e-cigarettes. So, it's not just about cigarettes anymore, it's about e-cigarettes and juuling and that's what I'd like to educate you a little bit about. So, a standard cigarette has a milligram, about a milligram of nicotine in it. The e-cigarettes that our kids are using contains nicotine water. The attraction is many kids feel they're safe because it's just vapor, but it's not. It's very high concentrations of nicotine. So, e-cigarettes contain nicotine in concentrations of anywhere from three to twenty-four milligrams per milliliter of liquid. So, a milliliter is one-fifth of a teaspoon. The new thing is juuling. So, it's a brand name of e-cigarettes. It's a small device that does not have any vapor, um, so it goes undetected. The concentration of nicotine in the juuling devices is fifty-nine milligrams of nicotine in less than one milliliter of fluid. This is what our kids are vaping. This is what our kids are using and they're using them in schools. They are available to kids who are eighteen. I spoke with Jim Bach, the, um, principal at Chaska High School, and he threw up his hands, he said, Judy, I don't even know what to do with it. The juuling devices are about the size of a zip drive. These kids are carrying them in their pockets, they are using them openly in the classrooms, they're passing them down to young kids. This really is a health crisis. And so, like I said, if this were just about cigarettes, I wouldn't be talking to you about age twenty-one, but it's not just cigarettes. It really is a health crisis. The problem is with the juuling devices too, it's a nicotine salt, so it's highly, it's absorbed very quickly in the system. It gives kids a little bit of a head rush, um, and it's very addictive. Problem with nicotine addiction in our teens is their brains are not fully developed. If any of you have raised children, you know this, um, it's not until the early twenties that the brain is fully development, developed. The science is very clear about risk to concentration, risk to memory, poor learning, it really is a health crisis. You guys help the power to help me change this. Um, I really would love this city council to look at the age at which we can buy tobacco in this community. And I think the ordinance would have to be twofold, certainly, making it age twenty-one. I talked with David Breckman, you probably know David, um, he gave me some statistics about the high school students. Roughly ten percent of our high school seniors are eighteen when they start. By the second, first, the start of the second semester, so in January, when kids come back from Christmas vacation, more than fifty percent of our high school seniors are eighteen. It is legal to buy this stuff when you're eighteen. And by the time they graduate, virtually all of our students are eighteen. It's why they're having so much trouble in the high school, because it's legal. So, it, it's a huge problem. Um, I, I, like I said, I've been talking about this for a long time. My husband, who's sitting behind me, is also a pediatrician. And the story here is a young man came to see him a few months ago. This young man graduated from Chaska High School, he was a very good student, um, very good family, one of our premier athletes. And he came in because his mother was concerned about anxiety and panic attacks. As Bob spoke with him, he found out that he had started vaping. Um, and he was vaping twenty-five to fifty puffs a day and also using smokeless tobacco, this is at age nineteen. He heard about the risks and he decided cold turkey. His withdrawal symptoms were severe. They were anxiety, panic attacks, sleep disorder. This is what our kids have access to at age eighteen. So, again, back to the ordinance, what I would love you to consider is to, to think about the age should be age twenty-one. But more importantly, where kids have access to these things. This, the ordinance that the city of Edina passed not only limited the age at which you can buy tobacco to age twenty-one, but they also moved the e-cigarettes to twenty-one and older establishments, which means you can only buy them at places like, um, smoke shops and, um, liquor stores. Part of the problem is all these things are available in our convenience stores. Our kids can walk into QuickDrip, they can walk into Super America and they can buy these things. Yes, they have to be eighteen and if we move it to twenty-one, I'm not kidding, I'm, I don't kid myself, people are still gonna get them, you can buy this stuff online. But I think it's an opportunity for our city to take a stand and to say, we value our children, we value the health of this community. So, talk to kids you know, talk to kids in your neighborhood, talk to teachers you know, talk to Jim Bach. I'm not making this stuff up, this really is a crisis. Learn more about it. I'm gonna leave my business cards. I would be happy to talk to each and every one of you about how important this is. If you have further information, please contact me, but I would love the city council to review this. Um, and I would love the city of Chaska to take a stand for our students.
Thank you.
Impatient.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Comments?
So, the last time they came and spoke with us, I thought there was a discussion that we were gonna continue having, it doesn't seem like we've had. And so, uh, maybe I remember it wrong.
Yeah, there was, we did have somebody come and speak about before, there didn't seem to be a lot of consensus on whether there was a direction we wanted to move forward or not. We can certainly bring back up the discussion again.
Cause I, my struggle with it is, is, is that, um, we can do that here in Chaska, but all they gotta do is drive to Carver, the northern edge of, I mean, until, I, I'm, I, I get it, I understand what you're saying. But if, if we just restrict it here, we're not restricted, it, it looks, to me, it should be at least a countywide. If, if it's so, if it's this dangerous, why isn't the state looking? And that's what I don't understand. I mean, I get it eventually and at the rate we're going, it'll probably take fifty years to get the whole state under the law. But it, for me, in the metro area, it just seems to be a struggle to, that we're gonna gain anything by doing it. And I, and I know that you'll differ with me on that. But it's just a struggle with me to, uh, to see that it, it really is going to work. And there's known statistics out there that say that if Chaska does it, is it gonna change Chaska kids? If they want that, all they have to do is drive a short distance and get it. So, I, I, I wish that this was done at a state level.
Me too.
And, and then, and make the whole state. Now, it's a whole different ballgame.
Yes, and it is, it was proposed at the state legislature last year and I'm sure it will come up again this, this year. But as you said, things happen slowly at a state level and I just, I would go back to what happened, some of you will remember this, remember the nineteen seventies when the drinking age changed? Um, it went to eighteen. Um, we realized that in nineteen seventy-three, it went to eighteen briefly, it was a huge problem in our high schools. And then it went to age twenty-one, or age nineteen, but it took three years to make that change. Um, and so, I agree with you, this absolutely is a state, statewide. I actually think it's a nationwide issue because this, this is dangerous for our youth. But I also think that it has to start somewhere. And I think the more we can send the message to our state legislators that parents care about this, that teachers care about this, that communities care about this, then maybe they'll take the appropriate action at the state level.
Well, I think too, if I remember back, Scott Chief probably remembers better than I do, but, you know, Chaska was one of the first to pass the social host ordinance. At the time, it was same thing, it was like, well, wait a minute, but Chan, you know, and how does this all kinda work? But, you know, we took a step forward, you know, and said, you know, in our community, we think it's important, you know, to have the social host ordinance. And, uh, so I think that, you know, something like this is something maybe that, you know, if, if cities like Chaska, you know, start taking a stand in that area, you know, maybe we can get others to follow suit.
Exactly. I'd love the city to be a leader, not a follower, um, to take a stand, so.
So, maybe, I don't know, Matt, it mean if there's, you know, some consensus, we could bring this back to us or?
Should we schedule some time to talk about this?
Yeah, no, I would say we talk about, the other thing we could do is talk about, you know, to me, this is gonna be one of those that public process is gonna be important on it.
Right.
Um, because I'm sure there's businesses in town that feel very different than that.
Yeah.
And so, I think, um, uh, you know, having some kind of engagement process with that, I think, would be important uh, from an education standpoint about why we'd be considering it, what's being considered, what it means. Uh, and then be able to, to give people sort of proper input channel to be able to do that. We can give some thought to, um, uh, you know, what a process like that might look like and then, um, you know, also the things to consider, uh, as we're going through that, bring it back to a work session.
And maybe even look at, I don't know if it's possible to pull together councils from all the cities in Carver County and do it as a county. And maybe that would help.
I don't think that'll happen though.
Would never happen.
No, cause I, I mean, there, when this discussion came up.
At least a discussion.
Just to be honest, when this discussion came up before, uh, there was councils that came out pretty, uh.
It was mixed.
It, it, they, they weren't mincing words, they said they weren't gonna do it. So, I, I do think if it, uh, I couldn't complete, I, I completely agree that, I mean, the most of, I mean, this is no different to me than when we first started seeing, uh, smoking bans in restaurants. And it started at, uh, it started with a few cities doing them and of course, the businesses were very upset about the fact that people could just go from one state to another to go to another restaurant where they could. And it wasn't really until the state took action that it actually had a significant impact. Um, and it would make sense to look at as a county, but I just don't think that that's realistic. Um, but we can put together that sort of discussion items and talk about.
Well, and I think now that we have that, and I haven't been in there, but now that we have the smoke shop up in the commons, you know, so close to the high school, I mean, that's a little bit different than.
Right.
The last time we looked at this, so.
And it's, you know, I think there's just certain things in our, in our past, in our history that have just proven that, you know, even though it should be something that's dealt with at a state level, sometimes it takes action by the cities to really drive that interest and, and the state to actually start looking at these things more seriously. You know, maybe it's time we kind of, uh, join in on that action and help drive that. Because it is, I believe, a, a direction that eventually is going to happen. I, I think if more cities get involved, it'll just happen soon.
And, uh, doctor, just one question, have they looked at moving the age to like nineteen? You know, to where you get into a situation where you kinda take the people that are still in high school out of the equation? I mean, is that, why, I mean.
To the best of my knowledge, yeah.
Is there any specific reason why it's twenty-one on even that?
You know, certainly what has happened thus far in the municipalities here in Minnesota, it's been age twenty-one. Nationwide, there were a few states that have actually changed it statewide and it's always been to twenty-one. I've not seen them stutter stuff at nineteen like we did with the age of drinking several years ago, it's gone from eighteen to twenty-one.
Okay.
And again, I think when you think about the science and brain development, that is what's best.
So, maybe that's why they didn't consider the nineteen.
Yes, it's possible.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, um, next up, I have, uh, Neighbors of Chaska Magazine Tyler Blansky. Hi Tyler.
Council members, good evening. My name is Tyler Blansky and I'm excited, my wife Brittany and I are launching a new magazine here in Chaska called The Neighbors of Chaska. And I really appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about it with you tonight because we exist, we're really looking forward to helping to grow city pride here in Chaska, also helping local businesses thrive. And most importantly, just connecting neighbors with each other. Uh, it's a full color magazine that features a family from a neighborhood here in Chaska. On the cover each month, it's mailed directly into homes, totally free for residents because it's sponsored entirely by local businesses. Uh, every issue features a calendar of events, we shine the spotlight on a local business, we interview the family that's on the cover, there are feature article. And it's a great, it's meant to be a great resource for the community. Um, I'm excited to, the first edition comes out this July and, uh, I look forward to being able to maybe come back and, and show you when it's in print.
Cool. Kinda want you to kinda tell them where your marketing to start with, cause you're not doing the whole city right away, correct?
Yes, yeah, so, right now, it goes to thirty-two hundred homes. I believe there are sixty-two hundred homes in Chaska total or thereabouts, so we're a little over half. And we do hope to grow our readership over time, but the more readership means the larger the launch cost in that. So, it's gonna take time for it to grow. But our market is homeowners, so it doesn't go to any renters.
You're getting good response on businesses wanting to place ads and so forth?
Yes, yes, yeah. Many sponsors are now sponsoring the publication and it's been such a privilege to be able to meet so many good local business owners and to hear their stories and then to give them a platform, to be able to engage the local community in a way that's not just speaking at them, but actually through sponsoring their community, their families and, uh, you know, and city pride.
Sweet. I met with Tyler, uh, when we meet, last week?
Yes.
Last week and, um, I thought it was important for him to come and kinda share this with, with us if you get asked about this magazine instead of saying, I don't know anything about it. I think it's good to come in and, and just kinda share with us and our two point one million viewers tonight that are watching. Um, there's a one point two.
I thought it was two point two.
One, one point two, I don't know, whatever. It's over a million people are watching tonight that'll at least be able to see that and, uh, uh, to, to know that it's a legit magazine and it's not some, something out there that, you, you know, there's just today's world, you have to be a little skeptical of everything sometimes.
So, how did you determine the thirty-two hundred homes or thirty-three hundred homes you're sending it to? I mean, is it something that people have registered for or signed up for or?
No, Best Version Media, which is a company that we work for, it's similar to a franchise, but not, not quite. Um, has a data team that actually acquires the addresses and all that. What we wanted to do was not just zip code it, we wanted to target neighborhoods so that there would be that neighborhood feel.
First cover page, a picture of the mayor or?
See?
People laugh really loud.
No, I, hey, hey. Order this court.
They want people to read this.
I'm right near you guys.
Yeah, we got the county attorney here, can you cross-examine?
I'm really excited for the family we have lined up for the July edition.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So, I, you're, I'm just kinda the same way, we're all just gonna have to wait and see the.
See what it is.
See what the first, and I, I hope that you deliver a few, uh, copies to be down here and on display that people, whether they're waiting to see someone, might be able to look at and be able to see that as well and, and at least one for all the councilmembers.
Yes.
Cause I, I don't know which ones appear, who will get it, who won't.
I might not be in the right neighborhood.
You might not be in the right neighborhood. I kinda checked your name off as well.
Yeah. It's all right.
So.
Great, well, good luck.
Yes, Brittany and I are hoping we can be a good resource for you. I'll leave a couple of business cards in the back if you have any questions or ideas. Um, we're really open to learning and growing. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Thanks, Heather.
All right, that's all that I have that was, uh, registered tonight. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on their visitor presentation? Okay, we'll move on to item number six, approving previous, uh, meeting minutes. Um, discussion, if not entertain a motion to approve.
So, move.
Motion by councilmember Rowe.
I'll second it.
Second by councilmember Geisler.
Should we do them separately or together?
I've never seen it like that.
Oh, there was a, there was, it was just an issue that they didn't get, there was a problem with the copy.
The audio was bad, so they couldn't do the minutes.
So, we're just approving both.
Ah, gotcha, okay.
I don't see any reason we need to approve them separately. No, I'm getting a nod, we don't have to, so, all right. So, a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries, moves us to item number seven, consent agenda for anyone that's uncertain. There are items that need action, but not necessarily, uh, conversation, but we can pull anything out that we may, if someone has a question. Discussion. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
Motion by councilmember Rowe.
I'll second that.
Second by councilmember Geisler to approve the consent agenda. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries, moves us to item number eight.
They're listed there. See, I, I thought that was all one item, but they're all about different items, yeah.
Um, so, uh, our first item is Adopt Resolution Twenty-Eighteen dash seventy-nine, which is a public hearing establishing redevelopment tax increment financing district twenty-one adoption TIF plan and authorizing execution of parking agreement, hotspot redevelopment.
Mayor and councilmembers, I'll turn this one over to Nate.
All right, mayor and councilmembers, this is an item that has to do with the hotspot redevelopment that we've been working on over the last few months. Um, so, the site includes the, the former hotspot gas station parcel, the parcel where, uh, the building known as the former Schneiderman's building, where Michael Cycles was previously located, um, is included in there. And also, we've been working with the CDA, um, the Carver County CDA to include half, the west half of their parking lot that's on the corner there, uh, in the redevelopment project. So, the plan, as will be presented a little bit later in tonight's meeting, um, for the preliminary approval, includes a, uh, Dunkin', Dunkin' Donuts drive-through, another building that has about, well, it has three separate, um, uh, spaces for businesses to locate, um, so commercial retail type businesses. And then on that corner where the CDA parking lot currently exists would be another building there. So, there's a number of things that, from an economic development standpoint, uh, need to be approved tonight and they're also, this item will be, again, on the EDA agenda where you're gonna be approving slightly different things, but it all sort of mounts to establishing the TIF district, um, accepting the purchase agreement, uh, with the CDA and with the, uh, the prospective owners and the developer, uh, for the project, um, and also putting forward a, a parking agreement with the CDA that will help offset some of the parking that they'll lose by contributing half of their existing parking lot today. So, first, I'll walk through the purchase agreement that, um, you'll all be considering, um, between this meeting and the EDA meeting to follow. So, what we're doing is sort of similar to the hotspot location where the, where the city would purchase that piece of property from the current owner and then, uh, turn around and sell it to the, the developer, Chaska Growth Holdings is there, is what they're going to hold the property under. With the CDA, we're gonna do the same thing. So, we're proposing that the EDA would come, purchase that property from this, from the CDA, the Carver County CDA, um, and then turn around and sell it to Chaska Growth Holdings. Um, so what we've come to terms with on the CDA is that we would pay six thousand dollars per parking space lost. Um, and this is a, a fee that would then be paid by the developer as well, so we're, we're just sort of passing that through. The developer's gonna pay that six thousand per parking spot. So, they're gonna lose six parking spots, so for a total of thirty-six thousand dollars, the developer would pay. Uh, the developer's going to realign the existing parking that's there. So, think about that, that whole parking lot that's there, the west half will become a building, the east half will remain parking that the CDA will own, um, but right now, it's not configured right, uh, so they're gonna have to reorient the parking for the new parcels that will stand. Um, so they'll have, I think, a total of seven parking spaces there, two ADA, uh, handicap accessible parking spaces and then five general parking spaces. Uh, and the developer will be responsible for making that alignment happen. And then for those parking spaces that are being lost, what the city is agreeing to do is to stripe on the, within the right-of-way on Walnut Street, um, sort of north of the Cooper's parking entrance, um, where it will stripe, uh, five, I'm sorry, six parallel parking spaces on the street, um, so that staff and, um, visitors to the CDA have that location, um, you know, striped and highlighted as an option to park as well.
It's not solely theirs though, right?
Not solely theirs. What we will do is put some signage up that sort of encourages it to be CDA use during business hours. Um, but it would be, you know, public parking, um, in that location.
And it's not striped currently then?
It's not striped currently, yeah. So, we'll just be using paint, um, and we'll stripe out just to make it a little bit more safe and, um, you know, visible for people to be able to park there who are coming into CDA and they need that extra space. My, my sense, and I think the CDA, um, you know, tends to agree that the parking that they'll have in that reconfigured space more often than not is gonna serve the need that they have. It's more when they have a larger meeting, um, you know, or something that they're not, that's a little bit less frequent, they may need that sort of overflow space available to them. And they just wanna make sure that they're able to accommodate people, um, when that situation comes up. So, those are the, those are the general terms of that agreement and what you all will be agreeing to or approving in the council meeting tonight is that parking agreement with the C, with the CDA, which is basically saying, you know, laying out those terms, the city's gonna stripe out that parking, um, for the CDA and we'll work with them in the future to make sure that, you know, they've got something on the street there for them. Onto the TIF district, um, as a part of the purchase agreement that we have with the developer, uh, we have outlined that we would establish a TIF district and what the TIF district does is allows us to facilitate that transaction that brings the current hotspot site into the ownership of the development team. Um, so, as we've talked before, we'd be purchasing, um, this, the EDA would be purchasing that property for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, from the current owner and then we'd use the proceeds of the TIF district so that increment, um, property taxes generated through the project to then reimburse ourselves for that cost of that, that property transaction. Um, and then that property gets sold to the developer for a dollar. Um, keep in mind, the developer is purchasing the CDA's parcel for thirty-six thousand and they've already purchased the Schneiderman's building, um, for about nine hundred thousand dollars. So, they do have significant skin in the game, um, as far as, you know, costs in this project in addition to the cost of the redevelopment, um, you know, cleaning up the site and getting the building established and all of that. So, this is a way for us to help, uh, with that redevelopment, um, you know, that we see as a priority of the city as well. So, what we'll be doing tonight is, you know, establishing the TIF district and what we look at is that the parcels comprise, um, parcels comprising at least seventy percent of the area of the district are occupied by buildings, um, which we find that to be true today. Um, that the, there are more than fifty percent of the buildings, um, are structurally, uh, substandard and so we've done that analysis to find that those buildings are structurally substandard and what we look at for that are things like HVAC, um, you know, how those systems would need to be upgraded in order to bring them up to code, ADA accessibility and what we need to be done to the building if it were to be brought up to code, um, and then other structural things that would need to happen if someone were in, were to come in and, and address those needs. And what we find in those buildings is that the cost of doing that is more than the value of the building. So, that's kinda where that substandard declaration comes in. So, that's finding has occurred, uh, and then the parcels are deemed occupied because at least fifteen percent of the area of the parcel contains a building or some other facility and that's true in this case as well. They're all either parking lots or buildings, um, on those, on those. So, it qualifies for a twenty-five year redevelopment TIF district. So, what the TIF district would bring in is, um, about just over one point two million dollars over the course of that twenty-five year term. Um, that's with interest in thing, you know, we're, we're, we're looking out at future dollars there. there, so when we boil that down to current dollars, that gets us to the $650,000 that we need to cover the transaction. So, that's why you see a number there that, that looks a lot more than, than what the transaction amount is. So, what we're asking for tonight from the council, and we'll go through this at the EDA as well, and it'll be a little bit different of an ask there for, for approval, but for the council tonight, what you need to do, or what we're asking you to do, is to recommend authorization of the mayor and the city administrator to execute the parking agreement with the Carver County CDA, and then also hold a public hearing, and then recommend approving of, you know, creating the TIF district number 21 for this area, so that'd be those three parcels that are included in this redevelopment project. The EDA meeting will be asking you to also approve the TIF district, and then also approve amendments that we've made to the purchase agreement with the developer, since that, you all approved that back in January, but now that the CDA parcel is included in the project, we've amended that purchase agreement to include that transaction. So, we'll go through that in the EDA meeting after this. So, with that, I'll leave it open to you to ask any questions, or however you'd like to proceed.
Questions? So, so basically, we need to do this in a couple of different motions, then?
You can do one motion, what you need to do is hold a public hearing, and if you're comfortable with, with both the TIF district and the parking agreement with the CDA, we've got the motion set up here so that you can do it with one motion, it's all laid out in a single resolution.
Alright. Any other discussion up here before I have the public hearing?
Have they already tested the, the ground for demolition, is that all done?
We've done a phase one and a phase two site analysis on the hotspot site to determine what's underground there, and there's going to need to be some cleanup. The extent of that is going to depend on, you know, ultimately how the plans are approved and the level of soil disturbance that needs to occur in order to build the building, but then there, you know, there may be other soil remediation that needs to occur on the remainder of the site, but that's the developers', you know, it's part of their responsibility to take care of that, so, and we're working with them to make sure that they're able to do that.
Okay.
Are there grant dollars for that?
Yep, yep, and that's part of how we can kind of help them out a little bit, yep.
Alright, go ahead and we'll move forward. So, go ahead and we'll open the public hearing at 7:36, is there anyone that would like to speak on behalf of this project? Last call. Alright, we'll move to 7:37, and we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. What are your thoughts up here? Do they need a motion?
Well, I think, you know, I'll go ahead and make a motion, adopt the resolution 2018-79, establishing redevelopment tax increment financing district number 21, adoption of the TIF plan, and authorizing execution of the parking agreement. I think we all have been waiting to get this done and get that building out of here
a long time.
Long time.
Long time, so, I have a motion by Councilmember Row.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz, and I'm just going to go with adopting resolution 2018-79 and parking agreement. Further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I just had one quick question for Nate. Nate, we were talking about this earlier, I was talking with Matt about it on when we think the demolition could take place, is it possible to have that done prior to the fire and ice, or, Matt, Matt, we were thinking we may not be able to get that?
He didn't like the answer I gave him.
Didn't like the answer, no. I'm coming to you.
I didn't like the answer from Dan.
Next, it goes to Kevin, if I don't get the?
The way that we have the purchase agreements drafted right now, we're setting July 2nd as a closing. What we're trying to do is get everyone to sign those purchase agreements and make sure that that closing occurs, but that's what needs to happen for the buildings to be knocked down. I'm trying my hardest to get the current owners to sign their purchase agreements, so, if you want to help me out with that. But, right now, you know, the last I've heard from them is they're interested in that closing date too, so, that's what we're trying to pursue.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, so we will move to item A B, public comments regarding the body officer. Body worn cameras, I was reading that wrong, body worn cameras, I don't know, Matt?
Yep, Mayor, Councilmember, the item in front of you tonight is, it's a process that is actually required by its state statute to have a public input hearing. Prior to implementing anything with body worn cameras in the state, over the last 12 months, the police department, Chesapeake Police Department has been looking into depth and doing studies on the body worn cameras, looking at the different issues that exist out there, and, you know, it's, it's not just as simple as just having a camera, turning it on, there's all kinds of privacy data, information that, you know, things need to be taken into consideration, a number of things do, and so they've been spending time working through that, coming up with a policy, and really, at this point in the game, the intent would be to try to go forward with a pilot study over the next 12 months. We were able to secure getting basically a system that we can use at no cost for the next 12 months to go through a pilot study with this, and be able to really sort of look at implementing the policy and see are there issues that we need to change or look at, or those types of things through a pilot process, project. So, I have the chief and Chris here to talk about, just a little bit about where they're at in the process, and then again, this is, it's not a, it's not a public hearing, but it's a public input process that's required by state statute prior to actually going through the, the process of implementing this. The action that we'd be looking for tonight is really to accept any public input in that process, so, turn it over to these guys.
Thank you, Matt, Mr. Mayor, council. You know me, you all know Lieutenant George, but for the 1.2 million who are watching, they may not know him, he is our lieutenant in charge of our support services division. He intimately knows the camera, the technology, and all of the implementation, he is with me tonight because he's really good-looking, and he's modeling the camera for you and for those who may be viewing. You've seen the document that I supplied a couple of weeks ago, so I know you're well-versed, and Matt outlined it very well. We are here tonight because statute requires a three-legged stool prior to the deployment of any cameras in the field worn by an officer. Actually, statute says before the purchase or the deployment, we must do three things. As, as already been said, we haven't bought a thing, and we are going to do this trial for a year without any cost to our budget to the city, so there's no purchase. Here's the camera, and the reason we have the camera is we have the benefit of a one-year pilot, but before we can deploy, we need to do three things. It's all about public input, we needed to create an electronic reception of any input, a US mail conduit, and then you taking public input from anyone who is here who may wish to comment. Once those three, three things have happened, we have satisfied the statute, and we can move forward. Our intent is to move forward tomorrow with some training for our officers in the field, actually, we'll be using the properties you just discussed, the old hotspot and the old furniture building. We have a list of stakeholders that is displayed here for you, and these are people whom we have already reached out to. Our public input process will not end tonight, it will continue the entire year that our pilot is running, as we gauge community feeling, citizen reaction, and our own experience with these cameras. But, to this point, these are the people we have contacted, we are continuing to, in fact, Lieutenant and I are going to the Chesapeake Lions tomorrow to talk to them in depth about the cameras, we already spoken to Chesapeake Rotary, and frankly, we are pushing this out to as many people and as many groups that we can, and we will continue to do so, as I said. We have pushed this out on all of our social media platforms, we put it on our website, we put it on the city's website, Kevin? We've also had it covered in depth by the Chesapeake Herald, thank you very much, they have also received on their Facebook page, public input, which we are taking into account. I can tell you this, Mayor and council, the closest thing that we have come to any kind of negative feedback about these cameras and their deployment is something akin to this. Keep the darn cameras running all the time, never turn them off because you got to watch those cops. I take that as sort of a backhanded compliment. Everyone else is saying cheer, cheers to this idea, put them out there, it just aids in another way to be transparent, so that whatever transpires in a contact, especially a potentially adversarial contact, there is a record for all to see. And without getting into detail, you are all keenly aware of just such an incident that we concluded just last week. The value of the video incredibly important and cannot be understated. And so, with us tonight are some people whom I know would like to make some comment, there are some people whom are just here physically present to be supportive, and at this time, I would like to just step aside and let anyone who may like to comment to you, put input, have that opportunity, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
Do we have to officially open the public hearing?
It's not a public hearing, it's just public input.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, my name's Mark Metz, I'm the Carver County Attorney, and I spoke with Chief Knight about body cameras, and county attorneys across the state have been discussing this for the last year to two years, and the policies, and I've reviewed the policies, and I am fully in support of these body cameras. From our perspective as prosecutors, these body cameras add tremendous value, of evidentiary value, really, and what I see happening and looking at some of the studies is, this will lead to a more efficient system, because we'll have evidence of a incident, a crime, that the defense council can look at, they can show their client, and oftentimes can say, look what happened here, or you're indicating that this is what occurred and we have the evidence. So, that's one, the efficiency, it's also going to add to our increased percentage of cases that we can prosecute for, for these types of cases. It's not just somebody's testimony against another person's testimony, it is tremendous evidentiary value. And then, I know Chief Knight talked about, or at least indicated in the policies and his presentations prior to this, and probably presented to you, that it really does add a lot of value to, to discrepancies and complaints against police officers, because from our perspective, my perspective as a county attorney, as prosecutors, 99% of them are hardworking, dedicated, they're diligent, they're honorable, and this can exonerate them. If somebody comes and says, well, this officer was, you know, excessive with me, and we, they can look at that, and that's for the chief, obviously, to deal with that, and on the other side, if there is an incident where there is some wrongdoing, you have that as well, so, I appreciate the opportunity to come and, you know, speak in support of this, and I think it's going to really add a lot of value to, you know, our office and prosecuting these cases, and, and so, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come, appreciate it. Anyone else?
Well, good evening, I'm Steve Holmgren, I'm the chief public defender of the First Judicial District. I'm also a resident of Chaska, I've lived here, oh, I don't know, long enough to have my house, put it that way, it's probably about 18, 19 years now. I'm also speaking in support of the body cam pilot. We've had some experience in my line of work, in the First Judicial District with these cameras, at least 10 jurisdictions in the district already employ them, and we find them to be incredibly helpful, as Mr. Metz mentioned and the chief mentioned, it really does, from a citizen's perspective, it adds transparency to the, to the whole process from a criminal justice practitioner's perspective. It also helps our clientele, as any lawyer knows, what happens when clients come in, often there's differing versions of what happened. Folks aren't necessarily attuned to what happened, but they have a perspective on it, and when there's ever any dispute about what they allegedly did or didn't do, or what the police officers did or didn't do, we'll frequently turn to those body cameras and take a look at them, and really, it does, it's powerful evidence, and it helps, it does help us get to the bottom of the situation, primarily when folks aren't necessarily recalling things as, as they might have actually occurred. So, I just encourage you to support this pilot, I don't really see that there's anything to lose. To me, it's really akin to the squad cameras that are used, in use all over the state now. Prior to those cameras, people would often say, well, I wasn't leaving, or I wasn't doing this or that, and those are really helpful and facilitate resolution of many, many cases, so I see this as akin to that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Jason Cameron, I'm the sheriff's chief deputy, and we have not yet decided in our office if it's our intention to have, have body cams, we're going to watch this pilot and pay attention to how it shakes out, but one of the things I want to talk about is the inclusion of all of the stakeholders, and we've had an opportunity to review the policies that the chief and his team have put together, and in our conversations internally, they're very similar to how we would do it, and so, for the prosecution and the defense and for the citizens in the county, we would model our product, our program after this if we decide to go that way, so we would have consistency pretty much throughout the county then, and.
We'll take a stipend from you for all of our work.
Yeah, I appreciate it, I appreciate the work you put into it, so.
Anyway, we can get money out of the car.
So, I, I think that consistency is, is very important, and, and, you know, that would be our intention to do that, and so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Awesome, thank you for being here. Good evening.
Yes, my name's Robert Olson, I'm from Chaska. I really don't have an opinion yet on this, because there's a lot that needs to be learned, but I've got a lot of questions. After the Axion contract expires after this one-year free trial period, what happens to the video data? Could it be, could the city take the data to another vendor, put it on its own servers like is happening with the dash cam squad video, or what? How long will the video data be stored for enforceable purposes, non-enforceable purposes, or other purposes, and what would those other purposes be? What are the costs after the one-year free trial period? Is this a case that we're going to take and hook them on with a free period and make it so that they essentially can't go someplace else? What are the one-time costs, what are reoccurring costs? Who will review the data to determine what is releasable? Would it be a non-city organization, a non-law enforcement organization? There's a lot of mistrust in law enforcement, recent shootings in Minnesota, we don't want somebody to think that the wolf is guarding the chicken coop. What disciplinary measures will be taken against officers who do not activate the body cams per department's policy? Recent case in Minneapolis, body cam, or the dash cam was not running when there was an officer-involved shooting, would have been really nice to know what happened. Will the body cams record both audio in addition to video? It wasn't quite clear if that would happen in all cases. And why will the dash cams go away in the squad cars if the body cams are adopted? Dash cams could still give a different and possibly very important view of what happens in an incident. What are the city's current dash cam costs, as opposed to what the proposed body cam cost would be? Will citizens have the right to not be recorded in a general citizens' contact situation? And what are the several general exceptions-related issues? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mayor, Councilmember, one of the things, I think Chief Knight could probably talk specifically, generally about some of this stuff, but. talk specifically, generally about some of this stuff, but one of the things I would suggest is if there is lists of questions like that, it might be more helpful if we can get a list of questions and actually be able to respond back to each one of them in writing too. Or is that...
That would be great.
That might be easier and then we can certainly distribute that amongst the council too, so that you have that, if that seems acceptable.
Yes, and I'm sure other people have additional questions.
We appreciate these questions. I gave him my card. I was going to offer to meet with him independently, but I like your idea even more so. Many of these questions, and I'm not sure if you had the opportunity to read what we have online, but a lot of those questions are answered, but perhaps I could be more in-depth. Overall, the answers I am going to be able to give you are going to assuage any concerns that you have. I can guarantee you that. And if they don't, we'll talk further.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Dr. Richard Scott. I serve as the Public Health Manager for Carver County and I just wanted to say that I'm also very impressed with the process that we're going through to do the pilot study. Like any use of technology equipment or any use of other programs, it's always best to base those decisions on their use on thorough research and piloting. So, I just really commend Chief Knight and his colleagues and his associates to go in through this pilot study to make sure that we do the program right. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mayor and Council, thank you for this time. I can tell you, you know, I've been around long enough that I've used a black powder musket and I thought the big deal was when we went to revolvers. Well, this is a big deal. This is a quantum leap in our community policing effort and transparency. I am very excited and all of my peers across the state of Minnesota are very enthused at what this brings, to enhance our connection to the community via the transparency. So, we're very excited and thank you for this opportunity.
Thanks.
Chief, before you go, is that, is this, I guess I hadn't heard it, but I probably wasn't paying attention. Is this offered to other departments, this one-year trial, or is this something...
No, no, it is not. When we began looking, once revisiting, once the statute got cleared up on what's private and what is public and we were then comfortable with that we weren't going to put people's personal, intensely personal things that had no public safety, no public need to know aspect out there on YouTube, we started to move forward. The lieutenant started researching vendors and it was through him talking with Axon that they said, "Look, we'll offer you a one-year pilot and here we are." Some of my peers are envious because this is an opportunity that not everyone is getting and it's all due to Lieutenant George.
Are we obligated then?
Not whatsoever.
Okay.
And getting to this gentleman's question, the data's ours. It's completely ours. They can't even see it. They can't even view it because it's encrypted. And no matter what happens, if we decide no and walk away, the data comes with us.
I read that. So, yeah, like you said, most of those questions were in our information that he asked, which are all very good questions and obviously that's why they are.
Well, I think it points out that, you know, lots of people jumped to saying, "Well, we..." I think a lot of people are surprised to hear that all police officers don't have body cameras, but I think one of the things that becomes evident in these types of processes is to understand how complicated these issues are. It isn't, they aren't just black and white, like you have a camera or you don't. There's all these myriad of issues that go around it that really have to be thought out. So, I think the questions brought up are exactly the types of things that these guys have been sort of wrestling with.
All right. Anything else for the chief? Thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you. Thank you. Everyone, thank you for your comments. Thank you.
I said, I would recommend having you guys accept the public comments and being able to move forward with the pilot. Yep.
All right. Thank you. Thank you to the rest of all you guys for being here tonight. It's greatly appreciated. The comments are what we were looking for, so. All right. With that, we would want to entertain a motion to accept the public comment. So, I have a motion by Councilmember Schultz, second by Councilmember...
And it'd also be to move forward the pilot too.
Row. Are you good with that? Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
All right. So, what we're receiving is the public input and a motion to move forward with the pilot program. Discussion. I think, like I said, while, like Matt says, many people assume that everybody has them and that you don't, and while there's quite a list, extensive list of departments that have them, there's still probably three times as many that don't have them, so.
But I think it's, I think it's helpful too in this day and age with cameras out there, everybody's got a camera in their hand, so I like the idea of having a little more of a level playing field for the officers as well.
Well, I guess in my point of view with this particular topic is, appreciate the opportunity for a pilot, be able to spend a year, really utilizing them and see if they're going to bring the value that we think can really be able to measure that value.
Sounds like a neat situation.
Before we actually have to start spending any money.
Yeah. So.
Something like that.
All right. Last call. All right. We have a motion and a second, again, to accept the public comments and to move forward with the pilot. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post-name sign. Motion carries. We're gonna move to item number C, Adopt Resolution 2018-84, Ordinance 949, Approving the Preliminary Site and Building Plan, Preliminary Plot, and Adopting an Ordinance Approving the Rezoning of 650-707-10 Chestnut Street.
Mayor and Councilmember, the item in front of you tonight, I sure hope you guys are in support of this because you just approved a TIP district.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah. Chief Knight, we're kinda back there.
The only problem is you have to have the public hearings first, but the item in front of you tonight is coming back for the redevelopment of Hot Spot and this is really looking at the preliminary site and building plans for Hot Spot and Michael Cycles location. Liz is here to talk about, there was a recommendation from the Planning Commission to move it forward for approval.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We're looking at a preliminary site and building plan, a preliminary plat and rezoning request for the Hot Spot site and Michael Cycles site and a portion of the CDA parking lot site. So, the site is being shown on this aerial in front of you right now and it's just north of the Walgreens site and shares frontage with Highway 41 on the west side there and Walnut Street on the north side with the CDA apartment building just nestled around it. Fireman's Park is just across the street. So, specifically, the preliminary site and building plan approval is for the redevelopment of the site for all three sites, for 650, 700, and 710 Chestnut Street North. So, the proposal would involve demolishing the existing buildings on the site, both the Hot Spot and the Michael Cycles former buildings. And then, in replacement of that, construct three new buildings for the proposal, and one of them being a Dunkin' Donuts. The preliminary plat would be for plating this property from three lots into two lots. The first lot would encompass all three buildings, all three new buildings on one lot, and then the other lot would be for the CDA parking lot to remain. The rezoning request tonight is gonna be from the existing zoning districts that these parcels are in, so from the C2 General Commerce Zoning District and Plan Multi-Use District 10 and being rezoned to a Plan Commercial District Number 19, more specific to this proposal tonight. So, the overall site is three separate lots. It encompasses an acreage of 1.15 acres total.
Is one of the lots in the CDA lot, is that what we say three? Okay.
Yep. So, that one's the northerly lot here. Again, we're just looking at basically a portion of that that they're gonna be utilizing tonight as a part of this site. In terms of the existing conditions out there, as you're aware, both buildings still exist on the property in pretty deteriorated condition, so the redevelopment of the site is definitely a plus. The access into the site, the way it is now, is there are two accesses off of Highway 41. One is a shared access with Walgreens to the south and then another shared access there that was between Michael Cycles and the Hot Spot site. Those are generally planning to remain kind of where they're at right now with some slight modifications to the more central driveway, just to line up with MINDOT standards, but other than that, the flow of the site is gonna remain pretty much the same. The access on Walnut Street is also planning to remain as another way into the site.
Who owns that pass-through? Does that belong to...
It's a shared driveway, basically.
There's a cross-accesses, man, across the top and I think it's half-half. Half-and-half ownership? Well, not half-and-half. The southern half is owned by Walgreens, the northern half is half-owned by, the eastern portion is owned by the HRA and the western portion's owned by the site.
But, so, that road then will, or whatever we call that pass-through, will that get fixed up in this process because it's pretty rough shape?
A portion of it will at least. I'm not sure if they're planning to do the entire extent.
But we wouldn't do this nice and then leave the road look like that, would we?
Well, I...
Part of it, we don't have, I mean, it's private property.
Right.
And I get that, but, I mean, are we like talking to the other parties to say, "Hey, all this is happening, maybe we can work something out here?"
We can.
I mean, I don't know. I just, I've been getting some complaints about that, saying, "Why aren't you fixing that street?" Well, it's kinda, it's not ours, but I just hate to see and do all that redevelopment and then not, at least have the conversation and be told no, then not have the conversation and don't do it.
Yeah, we can reach out to Walgreens.
I mean, you know, it's, I'm sure there's some advantage to them as well doing it.
Yeah.
And while everybody's there paving everything else, so.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
So, here's the site plan proposed. It's flipped around a little bit, so the northerly portion is kind of on the left-hand side of this exhibit here. But as you can see, there's three different buildings as a part of this site plan. The northerly building will be a single-tenant building. The central building will be, at this point, a three-tenant building and then the southerly building is the Dunkin' Donuts that's planned. So, as you can see, there's one access directly into the site, to the shared parking lot there, and then the existing shared access to the south there. Parking, again, will be shared between all three establishments out there, which meets the requirements in terms of zoning for the sizes of those uses. Dunkin' Donuts has a drive-through component proposed on its site, which will gain access from that shared drive area and maneuver around the building and spill out into the shared parking lot there. In terms of landscaping, they're basically meeting our landscape plan with the exception of three under-story trees, which is an easy fix and they're final. They're meeting our planting island requirement and other requirements for the site. One item that came up during the concept plan was where there were potential areas for pedestrian spaces, so at this preliminary level, they have incorporated a patio on the east side of the Dunkin' Donuts site for people to sit out and enjoy their coffee or donuts, whatever they plan to eat. And then, a couple drawings of the proposed buildings out there. So, I have the northerly building shown here first, so the single-tenant building on the northern corner there. The comments that were brought up during the concept plan was looking at how they can utilize the materials and details to fit in with downtown Chaska and we believe they've done quite a good job in this preliminary submittal with the materials that they've chosen, the details that they've chosen, and just the overall look of the buildings. So, it'll, the buildings will be mainly composed of brick, a couple different colors and then have a dentil detail in the cornice area and then a couple brick details in between just to really heighten on being sensitive to the context that they're in out there. The middle building also has a very similar look to the northerly building. Basically, the same details are carried through on this. This one has a little bit more articulated shape and footprint, basically having a staggered or step-down approach just to reinforce kind of the grade that they have out there. So, overall, a very appealing and attractive building that they've been able to create here. The Dunkin' Donuts is just a little bit different in terms of its design. They have a certain prototype that they need to use, being a big branding business, so this one was a little bit more of a challenge in terms of changing some of the details and materials and whatnot to get it into a more appropriate level in terms of its context. But the applicant has done a lot of changes to this building to what it could potentially be or what it started out as, so they've done some things to incorporate a Chaska brick color, kind of as the primary color within that, as well as changing some colors on kind of the main elements here, which were more stark colors like black and white, and they've been able to change those colors to be a little bit more neutral and fitting for downtown Chaska. I have some brick samples too, if anyone is interested in seeing kind of the overall color variations of these buildings, but in turn, we believe the applicant has done the best that they could with this building to really try to fit it in with the context that it's going into. This is the preliminary plat being shown up here. I've just noted it just to give you an understanding of how the property is being platted. So, the blue lot is basically the lot that encompasses the three buildings. That will be only one lot for all three buildings and then the red lot is the one that will encompass the remainder of the CDA parking lot. So, in conclusion, we are asking you to make a motion tonight to adopt Resolution Number 2018-84, which is approving the preliminary site and building plan for 650-707-10 Chestnut Street North, based on the conditions that are listed within that. And then, we are also asking you to make another motion to adopt Ordinance Number 949, which is approving the rezoning from C2 and PMD 10 to PCD 19. I'm happy to answer any questions, provide any clarification if you need that, otherwise the applicant is in the audience as well.
Questions?
No, I think we've talked about this.
The good thing about all the items tonight, there are things you've talked about a lot.
Yes, a lot.
And we wanna get them done tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know, does the applicant have anything? I'm not sure who that is, but you'd have to come on up to the microphone, though. State your name, please.
Matt Perroy, Bright Pixel Design. I'm the architectural designer. If you have any questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, I think it's pretty well-covered.
Done everything you can do to make Dunkin' Donuts meet what we're looking for?
Yeah, and they have delicious blueberry crisp donuts.
We're talking about the building. We're not looking for it, is it, yet?
Yeah, you know, I think so. That one was challenging, like city staff had just brought up. They kind of designed it for like a Las Vegas or Orlando kind of feel, you know, it's not really appropriate here, so I basically kind of reskinned the whole thing. The only material that I thought really worked was the wood look. You know, it's kind of a wood siding look. The rest of all the materials all got changed, so it got changed from, like Liz said, the black and white brick to Chaska, you know, buff and like a dark kind of Java color of the brick, getting rid of real high contrast to more neutrals and grays and things like that. So, I think it'll fit in really nice and still be able to tell that it's a franchise. Thank you.
Good. You may as well ask him, can he get that building torn down by...
Yeah, go out there tonight. Start on it.
Can we help?
We wanna help.
We'll help, yeah.
Alex is gonna come and take a picture of us.
Thank you.
Tearing that building down, right, Alex?
All right. Thank you. Thanks for being here. All right. Is there any further discussion? If not, we gotta do two motions here.
I'll move approval to adopt Resolution 2018-84.
Okay, so, a motion by Councilmember Row.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler, adopting 2018-84.
I'll move approval to adopt Resolution 2018-84.
Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Rowe.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler, adopting 2018-84, which is approving the preliminary site and building plan. I think we've pretty much hashed this one, but discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post-name sign. The motion carries. And now I need a motion for Ordinance 949, which is a rezoning.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Geisler.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post-name sign. Motion carries. That's it. Moving forward. All right, we're moving on to Item D. Adopt Resolution 2018-85 and Ordinance 950, approving preliminary site and building plan, preliminary plat, and rezoning for Formaco.
Mayor, Councilmember, I think I'd suggest that maybe the next two items, because they're related, we could do together as far as a presentation.
Okay.
One has to do with the site plan, preliminary site plan for the Formaco building. This is one I, you guys have seen quite a bit down in the old Chaska Building Center site. Liz can go over recommendation coming back from the Planning Commission to move forward with that. And then we can have Nate talk about, because we are fee owner of the, or we're owner through contract for deed of this, this site, we'll actually be selling the property to Formaco. So Nate can talk a little bit about the development agreement. Which is the next item?
Right, Nate.
Liz?
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We're also looking at another preliminary site and building plan, preliminary plat and rezoning request tonight from the Formaco business at the Chaska Building Center site. So this aerial is showing where the site is located. The DDK building or Klingelhut's site is just west of this subject site. It's basically where you see the open vacant lots right now with kind of those remnant building pads or concrete pads still out there. So this, tonight, is looking at a portion of that in the center of the site and leaving a portion for later redevelopment. So again, we're not locating too far from where we were just looking at. So the Formaco business actually is currently in Savage right now. The business owner, however, lives in Chaska, so they're trying to bring their business back here to where they live or have been living for quite a while. So this is definitely very exciting for them. In terms of the background of the site, in May of 2010, the concept plan was approved for the entire Building Center site. So that includes the Klingelhut's site, this one, and then the remnant site just to the east of it. And then in October of 2011, that was when the preliminary and final were approved for the DDK building. So we're moving forward with another piece of this site, which was also guided in our downtown master plan as a major redevelopment site. So we're excited to see something move forward finally. The preliminary site and building plan would be for one new office-industrial building out there totaling 31,840 square feet in size, roughly 30 feet in height, for also some expansion potential as well. The preliminary plat would be for plating the remaining site out there from two lots to two lots, just changing the acreage a little bit more to be more conducive to the proposal tonight. And then the rezoning would be from a planned multi-use district to another planned multi-use district, really updating that to be appropriate or applicable to the proposal tonight. So the acreage of this site is roughly 7.75 acres total for two vacant lots out there. This is where former, the former fire station used to be years ago, and then the location of various outbuildings and storage buildings out there before they were torn down. Access into the site, as you can kind of see on this aerial here, there are multiple driveways onto County Road 61. One is existing into the DDK site, which would also act as a shared access to this site that you'll see in a bit here. And then there are remnant openings scattered along County Road 61 that will eventually have to be closed off, given the limitation of what the county allows on a county road. Included a site plan and a landscape plan on this slide here, just to give you an understanding of the layout and landscaping for the site. So the building is pretty much centered in the site, has basically a rectangular footprint as shown. And then there will be area for a building expansion just on the west side there, roughly at 9,000 square feet total for that expansion. Parking will be circulated around the building, so you'll have full circulate, or the business owner would have full circulation around the building, parking on most sides there with a loading dock oriented to the rear portion there. They are proposing 118 spaces on this site plan. For full build-out, including the expansion, they'll need 133 spaces. So they do have room to work with on their site to just show that as proof of parking, obviously. We only want them to construct what they need at this time and then construct more if needed in the future. In terms of landscaping, they almost met our ordinance, the way they have it proposed out there. They have a couple more overstory trees to incorporate on the site, and we've indicated to them to use that towards screening of the loading dock in the rear there, just from passersby on Chaska Boulevard.
So will you go back?
Yep.
So they're building the whole building now, correct?
They're just buil, they're just building roughly 30,000 square feet and then...
So there's room for expansion on that lot?
Yes, yes.
Can you move your mouse to the expansion area?
Yeah, so the building that they're building right away is what I'm highlighting here. And then just to the west of it is where they're showing future expansion potential.
Okay, thanks. What's that square footage?
Roughly 9,000 square feet for that. So it'll be 40,000 square feet at full build-out.
And they'll be able to meet the parking if they lose that?
They'll still meet it. They have a couple spaces to show in their proof of parking for the full build-out, but something they can definitely accommodate on their site. I have the building elevations on this slide here. So in general, it's a very attractive building, the way they have it proposed. They have more of the articulation oriented to the west side and, yeah, or sorry, south sides, and a little bit on the west and east sides towards Chaska Boulevard. So the people who are driving along are seeing the most attractive portions of the building with kind of those tall glasses, strips of glass on the front there, and then some brick proposed in between. The rest of the building will be concrete panels, kind of oriented more on the west and east sides and north sides, where you don't see as much of the building. They've included a couple renderings, too, just to give you an idea of kind of the overall look of the building. So that was the front, that was the first slide. This is the back of the building, and then kind of a more downward-looking angle. So overall, it's a very attractive building, something a little different than what you see with other industrial buildings. So we're happy with what they've been able to come up with for the design of this building on this redevelopment site. This is the preliminary plat, just showing how the lots are going to be platted out there. So in conclusion, we feel like the applicant has done a nice job with their preliminary submittal here. So we are asking you to make a motion tonight to adopt Resolution Number 2018-85, which is approving the preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat for Formaco, based on the conditions that are listed within that. And then a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 950, which is approving the rezoning from PMD 4 to PMD 21. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, the applicant is here as well.
Discussion here.
And when we've talked a lot about...
I guess we've had a lot of conversations.
Moving forward.
Nice-looking building.
Yeah, very nice.
Nate, do you want to talk a little bit about the development agreement?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So in addition, I am excited. This is just an exciting project, I think.
Is this E then? Are we just kind of talking about both of them?
Yeah. So...
It's hard to do the first one without having them.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah.
So in order, the city currently owns this site through contract for deed, so we control the property as a result of that. There is a TIFF district that has already been approved and exists on the site. That was teed up a number of years ago, with the hopes being that that would help, you know, attract a developer to the site. So the TIFF district exists today, and we're using that, the proceeds of that TIFF, to write down the cost of the property acquisition for the developer, in this case, Formaco. So that already exists. What Formaco's going to be doing, they're projecting to bring in about 15 pretty well-paying manufacturing jobs to the site immediately or upon opening, and then with room for growth into the future, too. So in the next couple of years, they're hoping for something in the range of 10 or maybe a little bit more positions to be created. And obviously, they're planning for growth beyond that, too, with that almost 9,000 square feet of space that they could add to the site in the future. So what we're doing, since we do own that piece of property through the contract for deed, is we do need to enter into a purchase and development agreement with them. So that outlines the terms of the transaction and also outlines how the TIFF needs to perform and their obligations as a result of that. The city needs to, as the council, needs to approve of the development and purchase and development agreement, and so does the EDA. So you'll see this on the EDA agenda after this meeting as well, and we'll talk about it there, too. What the council needs to approve of is the purchase and development agreement. The EDA needs to actually hold a public hearing in order to approve the sale of public property. That's going to happen as a part of this transaction, and also to approve the purchase and development agreement, too. So for the city's purposes and for the city council's purposes, the terms of the purchase and development agreement, I'll run through those. Formaco will pay the EDA $251,559. So that's a buck fifty per square foot for the site to acquire the property. They'll agree to enter into a TIFF note agreement. So the TIFF note will generate a net present value of $477,303 between now and 2040, when the TIFF district would close. In order to support that agreement or that net present value to be generated, Formaco will enter into a minimum market value agreement, so that there's an assessment agreement in place for just over $1.9 million. That will ensure that the TIFF is generating what it needs to in order to compensate, you know, the city for the written-down land value of the pri, or the written-down price of the property. The EDA will agree to pay Bremer Bank, so this is through the contract for deed. The EDA needs to pay the bank as a part of this transaction. So we'll pay Bremer Bank $533,862 in order to release the price of, in order to release the property to Formaco. And so that gap there, what we're looking at is between the $533 and the $251 that Formaco will pay us, that gap will be filled in through what the TIFF will generate. So in addition to that, the city agrees to remove all the concrete on the development site. So earlier tonight, during the consent agenda, council did approve solicitation of bids for that, concrete work, clearing the concrete that's out there. So we've got a schedule in place to conduct that work and get that done in order to allow Formaco to begin building their building on the site on their timeline.
So not only will this site look better, but the site next to it's going to look a lot better, too, which actually we've been getting feedback from our marketers, so that that's going to make it easier to sell. It's tough when you, we have somebody with a lot of vision here.
Yeah. Yes, you know, we've had a number of groups come forward and, you know, take a look at the site. Obviously, Formaco's the first that's going to proceed with the project here. But the first question variably is, what's going to happen to all that concrete out there? Who's involved in that? So now that just removes one more, you know, one more barrier that's perceived on the site.
So it's going to remove concrete from the entire site, then?
Entire site, yep.
Yep, so all the way over to Fireland.
Well, through that project, we'll prioritize Formaco's portion to be done first and get that concrete off of there right away, so they can get going. Yep, and then, you know, as they proceed, as the contract proceeds, they'll clear the remainder of the site, and then it'll just be seeded over with, you know, to grow grass in the interim. So hopefully, with any luck, we'll get that other portion sold and that grass won't grow too long, but at least it'll look better than concrete, so. So the TIFF will help generate revenue to offset the cost of the site clearance as well. So we're counting on, you know, this portion of increment that'll be generated to help with that. And then also, you know, when there's a project that does happen on the remainder of the site, that'll generate increment that'll help offset the site clearance cost as well. So we are planning for that to happen. Closing for the site is currently scheduled to occur July 18th. And I know Mark is very motivated to hit that date, so we've got every reason to believe that'll happen on July 18th. So that's good for everybody. So with that, staff would recommend a motion to adopt the resolution that's in front of you to approve the development agreement, the purchase and development agreement between the Chaska EDA, the city, and Formaco.
Thank you.
So we're proceeding with the concrete, no matter what, and hopefully that all happens even beforehand, maybe?
So the way that the process needs to occur to put the bids out and then, you know, receive the bids and you all award the bid, that will line up so that it gets awarded at the July 16th meeting, which is, you know, then two days before we close. And so that will allow us then to, you know, proceed with the clearance, you know.
Because we got to already get moving on that.
Well, Mark's given us a date certain that we have to be done, so.
Yep, and we've been working very closely.
Well, Mark, I think they better get it done.
Yep, yep. So we'll see Mark with a bulldozer out there if nothing else.
Hopefully, we'll come to that.
No, yeah, we don't want that to happen, but I'm confident he'll do it.
But just in case you'll be ready.
That's the threat on the table, so.
I mean, does it look favorable about getting someone to come in and remove that? I mean, it's kind of a crazy time right now to get...
Yeah, yep. I think we'll be okay with that. We've already had Mark's contractors sort of take a preliminary look at that, so I think as a, if nothing else, we may be able to work with them. But yeah, we'll see what we get, but I think we'll be able to get it.
Are we thinking of hauling that all off-site? Are they going to crush it here and then?
That's one of the options that we'll work with. Since there's not as much time sensitivity on that second portion of the site, that could be an opportunity for, you know, the contractor to be able to do that.
Great, thank you, Nate.
Yep.
All right. I don't know, is there any way we can slow this process down?
No, I think we need to move it forward, so we can get that concrete off of there.
Yeah. All right, so we need three motions. So let's start with, well, is there further discussion first off? I think, like I said, we've hashed this site for four years, probably five years, if not longer. All right, so let's start with Resolution 2018-85, which is the preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat.
I'll mic them up for Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Geisler, second by...
Yeah, I guess I'll go ahead and second that.
Councilmember Schultz, again, adopting Resolution 2018-85, which is the preliminary site and building plan. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? All right, that motion carries. Now we're going to do Ordinance 949, which is a rezoning, nope, wrong one, 950, which is zoning change. An entertaining motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Schultz.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Rowe, which is approving Ordinance 950, which is rezoning the plat. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Carries. And the third one is adopt Resolution 2018-77, which is approving the development agreement between the EDA and Formaco.
I'll go ahead and make that motion as well, sir.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Schultz.
Second that.
Second by Councilmember Geisler, again, adopting 2018-77 development agreement. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to F, adopt.
Good luck.
He's staying.
He's got EDA.
He's got EDA.
That's when you can, that's when you can really put it to him.
No. Uh, item F, adopt Resolution twenty eighteen dash eighty-six, approve concept plan for China Pagoda.
Um, Mayor, Councilmember, this is another site we've been talking about for a long time. Uh, the old KFC, uh, building on Yellow Brick Road. Uh, we do have a concept plan in front of us tonight, uh, for the applicant who is China Pagoda, who is, uh, proposing to move their current restaurant facility, uh, from where it is across the street over to the, uh, Yellow Brick Road, uh, site. Liz is here to, uh, talk a little bit about the concept that's in front of you and we also have the architect, uh, that's here as well.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We do have a theme tonight for redevelopment in downtown sites, so this is the next one on the list here. Uh, so this is a concept plan, uh, at seven nine eight Yellow Brick Road for China Pagoda, uh, which is the old, uh, KFC site, so it's been sitting vacant, uh, for several years now in a very dilapidated state out there. Uh, so we're excited to see someone provide some interest for the site and, and hopefully get a backup to a working order out there. Um, so the concept plan approval, uh, tonight is for the rehabbing of the existing building out there. Uh, they will be, um, using the existing footprint, uh, basically reskining the building, um, and reapplying material to it, but for the most part, the site and the building, uh, are pretty much going to stay intact in terms of their location out there. Um, it is in a planned commercial district, uh, so the used to be, uh, used as a restaurant is consistent with that zoning. Uh, so the site is roughly zero point six three acres in size. Um, there is an existing parking lot around, uh, the site that will be improved as a part of this project. Um, they will be utilizing the existing accesses into that, uh, parking lot out there. Uh, there is a drive-through component that was there with the former business, but they will not be using that as a part of this, uh, new, um, takeover. So again, like I said, that they'll be utilizing the existing footprint out there and the existing, uh, parking, as you can see. Uh, they will be, uh, changing the traffic direction a little bit in there. Uh, there will be a full access into the parking lot on that Easterly access into the site, uh, where patrons, uh, can use, uh, that parking. The Westerly access will be a one, uh, one-way, um, area on this parking lot side, uh, so basically allowing people to come out of, uh, the site but not allowing people to come in, which would, uh, in our sense, uh, create a more efficient, uh, traffic flow for the site. So the parking on the west would mainly be oriented, uh, to the workers of this establishment. Uh, so as you can see, the, uh, drive-through component is removed on the site plan, so they'll be replacing that with additional green space out there for additional landscaping, which we think is definitely a plus, uh, for the site and for, uh, that side of the building, uh, which doesn't have a lot going on with it right now. Uh, they do need parking out there, um, actually over the amount that's required, so that's definitely a plus.
They do?
Yep.
Oh.
Yep. For that size of a building, um, as a retail space, yes, they do need parking. So they'll have some opportunity to, uh, look at landscaping mainly on the east and, uh, north sides of the site. There is, um, pretty headed, uh, heavily wooded area on the west side here that typically blocks the view of the west side of the building. Um, so here are a couple drawings of their, uh, proposal tonight. Um, so again, the overall, um, shape of the building is pretty much going to stay intact. They will be removing that glass atrium around the front there and open that side up, um, add some windows in that area, um, and add signage, basically where you see signage today. Um, their main materials that they'll be utilizing out there is brick, cementitious siding and some glass. Um, so we have been working with the applicant to really, uh, try to, uh, understand what areas, uh, to focus on for this building. It is quite a challenge when you're utilizing an existing building out there, uh, but since it's been vacant for over a year, they do have to meet code in terms of, uh, building, um, materials out there, so that's kind of the next step in the process, but, uh, we have been able to sit down with them and kind of discuss some options, um, for the building to see where articulation can be added or more brick can be added, um, on these facades. I think the, the main two areas to focus on are the south sides and the east sides that have the biggest exposure, um, to the roads, uh, for them to really focus on those areas to, um, articulate. Uh, the north side, as you can see, is pretty bare, um, but with the addition of that green space on the north side, we're pushing for some heavy landscaping on that side to really hide, uh, that area. The west is also very hidden, uh, the way, um, existing vegetation is out there. So again, we're really trying to, um, push the articulation and details on those south and east sides, uh, which we've been working with the applicant on. Uh, I've done a preliminary analysis of kind of the overall area at this concept level to show where they can bring in some complementary materials or consistent materials that you see in downtown. So they have done a good job of doing that analysis. It's really trying to refine those pieces as they're going through, uh, to their preliminary. So we've kind of discussed colors, where more brick can be applied and so forth. Um, I think, um, you know, the way you see it right now, it does look very dark, so we've tried to talk about some areas that, uh, could potentially be lightened up, um, and, uh, provide more detail, uh, in elements that you see in downtown. So, um, where they're at right now, they've done a good analysis so far. They're working on some things to improve that building. Um, it is a challenging, uh, building to work with, uh, but, uh, we feel like they're going in the right direction, at least at this concept level stage. So we are asking you to make a motion tonight, uh, to adopt Resolution number two thousand eighteen dash eighty-six, which is approving the concept plan for seven nine eight Yellow Brick Road, uh, for China Pagoda, uh, based on the conditions that are listed within that. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Do you know if they have their financing in place to do all this?
Um. I'll answer that one. That, so a big part of this is, uh, you know, they're part of this development that's across the street. I think one of the things that, and I don't want to speak for them, but this is what at least they, they've shared with us, is to be prepared if we were to move forward with something on the site down there. So I don't think you'd see them actually move and do something until we go through with something, uh, across the street.
Right. City park quest, you mean?
Yeah, exactly. Uh, but at that point then, um, you know, there are components that were involved with the relocation and things like that. But they're trying to be prepared for that.
Okay.
Right.
So we're not expecting to see anything happen until?
Till that goes.
Yeah, but I mean, that, that schedule now is, you know, end of the summer to, to have something back from the task force here, so, I mean, you know, it, it's conceivable given, I mean, this is a concept, so they have still the preliminary and the final to go through. They could be on very similar tracks.
Good.
But I, I wouldn't expect it until we've gotten to that point with that development.
And did they already purchase the building?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, so the, 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 uh, property is actually purchased by relatives of the people who own the re- uh, restaurant now, so they already own the building.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is just. But I was wondering, cause I mean, they, I mean, they, uh, it's going to be seven, several hundred to half a million dollars in improvements, I would assume, for that building.
Yep, it's going to take a lot of work, that's for sure.
And you think you can work out the issues you have about the darkness?
Yeah, I, I, we've already opened that conversation up to look at ways to lighten up the building, so I think they're receptive to that.
Great. Thank you. Another one we've talked about and.
Right, another one, good to see you taking the next step, moving forward.
This should shorten all of our council meetings by twenty minutes.
Exactly. Exactly. I'll adopt Resolution twenty eighteen dash eighty-six.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Rowe.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz, again, adopting Resolution twenty eighteen dash eighty-six, approving concept plan for China Pagoda at Yellow Brick Road. The old KFC, if anyone's interested. Right. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are at, uh, bills. Anyone? Not entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the bills this week?
Motion by Councilmember Geisler.
I'll second those.
Second by Councilmember Schultz to, uh, pay the bills. Discussion. Hearing none, Nate, we call Rowe.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Geisler?
Yes.
Mayor Winchell?
Yes. All right, we're off to, uh, other business. Uh, Councilmember Schultz?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Okay. Councilmember Rowe?
Nothing for me either.
Councilmember Geisler?
Okaydoke. Um, just wanted to let everybody know or remind them that Farmer's Market starts this coming Wednesday, the twentieth, from three to seven. So it'll be every Wednesday until mid-September, I think it is. And also, a week from that is Bark in the Park on June twenty-seventh at Fireman's Park. And that's on, uh, Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, six P.M. I can think it goes to eight P.M., but bring your fur balls down there and they'll have lots of vendors and fun activities down there for pets. And, um, also, um, I did attend the open house at the Steiner, is it Kelving? Mental Wellness Facility. Um, I went there last, what was it, Thursday? And what a beautiful building that is. Wow. And I was pleasantly surprised, um, while we took a tour and there's only seven rooms in there, but they want to add on, I think another eight, but, um, what I did find out that, I know we all had concerns about, was whether or not to be somebody on-site there in case somebody had an issue or needed some help. And in fact, the answer is yes, there'll be somebody there pretty much twenty-four hours in different capacities, but there will be staff of one sort or another, um, during the day and during the evening. But it's a beautiful facility and it's nicer than any of the others that are around the state. Very, very nice. And it's a maximum of ten-day stay and it's all willing participants that are all vetted before they even come there, so. But what a beautiful building. Wow. Nice view from there, very private. I didn't even know that building existed until I drove into it, so I just wanted to share that it was, uh, worth the tour. And that's about all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Good.
Just a reminder that July second, we won't have a meeting. We still have two meetings in July, but it'll be the sixteenth and the thirtieth.
We're a month out from right now.
Yeah.
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 To introduce ourselves.
Yeah. It's a happy fourth.
Happy fourth of July.
Hang over there.
Which one?
Uh, sure.
We do have a, uh, public open house scheduled for this Wednesday. Uh, project that council's seen kind of early on, but it's for the interchange and the, uh, upgrades that are planned for County Road forty-four. Uh, June twentieth from five to seven, it'll be over at the Curling Center.
June twenty, five to seven? And where's it at?
Curling.
Event Center?
Event Center.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, I, I missed that. Okay.
Five to seven?
Five to seven.
So it'll be the forty-four, two twelve exchange?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Kevin?
Nate?
Yes, I have an item. Uh, the Minnesota Transportation Alliance, uh, which is led by Margaret Donahoe, uh, has requested a letter of support from, uh, the mayor and the council, um, in support for an application they're putting forward to continue the four lanes on two twelve, um, from basically Car- County Road eleven out to Cologne. Um, so if, if you're all okay with that, I guess I would ask if, if you'd entertain a quick motion to, um, approve the mayor's signature on that letter of support.
Okay. Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Schultz?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Geisler for me to sign a letter.
I like that we have that power. This will be about the twentieth time we've sent the letter and still getting money, but.
I, I kind of laugh about it, but I, I think we are getting closer, um, that, um, like I shared with you, we're in Washington and there was like a twenty-one million dollar gap and we're down to like twelve million. And hopefully somewhere we can come up with that twelve million and they can get the, the phase from Chaska Carver, however, wherever you want to call it, to Cologne and get that done. So these letter of supports, even though we kind of chuckle about them, they are, they are important and, and mean a lot, especially when it comes from a city like us that's pretty past us. This shows that we're still supporting and, and, uh, fully in favor of, and we've got every county and city from here to, to the, uh, South Dakota border on board with this, so hopefully one of these days we're going to get it. So, so anyways, we've got a motion to second to, uh, support that letter of support for, uh, Transportation Alliance. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. All right, you're good?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, uh, just a couple things.
Matt, that, the site at Clover Ridge that was part of the, that whole rebuild, will that get finished or can we get after somebody?
Yeah, it's actually, it's actually part of the contract for, uh, we just did this here, they just did Second Street, they're doing, uh, the new road that we just put in by the medical center and they're doing that whole sign too.
Are they going to fix the one that got hit by the car?
Oh, yeah.
As well?
Yeah, yeah. But no, that's, there's four projects that are part of the contract, that's one.
Oh, okay. Cause I, I just went by that again yesterday. I'm thinking, gee, that's, that's our, way too long after. People have to deal with that and clean it up, so it'll be good. Um, and then I, I, I got an email from, uh, a young lady from high school that, this is her capstone project, um, but they have a, they're doing classes, and I lost it, here we go, it's called Not Me, uh, Assault Prevention and Self-Defense Training. I told her that I would bring it up tonight. There were two of them, there's one, there was a women's class, which unfortunately was, um, already held before our meeting. Now there's one more and it's the twentieth, which I believe is Wednesday night, from six thirty to eighteen, but this is for men ages eight, fifteen and above. And it, it's just about, um, learn to avoid and escape dangerous situations, leaving deep feeling informed and empowered. So if you are interested, that's going to be interesting. Who am I going to talk to? Contact me and I'll get it, I'll, I'll forward this to you. But, um, June twentieth, they asked that we try to get this out, I think we all got that.
If you want to send it to me, we can get Kevin to put something together on it.
Oh, okay. I will do that. All right, um, the only other thing is, uh, we're coming on the Fourth of July, so, uh, happy Fourth of July, hopefully have good weather and, uh, be safe with your fireworks because you'll probably lie into me if you say you don't have any because they're illegal. It's just about, everybody does.
Reminder of the fireworks up on. Reminder of the fireworks up.
And the fireworks are at, behind Jonathan Elementary.
Yeah.
And there's a kitty parade in the morning and Jonathan always has a celebration, I don't know if they're going down to Lake this year, are they going to Lake this year or back at the, the house?
Well, they always have stuff up at the house, the, the lake stuff is.
But last year they went to the lake and they really liked it, so I didn't know, I haven't heard anything.
I don't know.
So, all right, and I'm going to be gone to Cooperstown, so I won't be around all next week, so if you need anything signed, you got to do it this week.
Okay.
And that's it, I would look for a motion to.
I have one request here to just give an update on the dog park.
The what?
I had a request to just give an update on the dog park.
What?
Dog park.
The what? We never.
Dog park.
Another thing on our list.
Just to update on the, the dog park, we did have the public input process that was a more of an open house style. We ended up getting two hundred and some comments back and, and I'd say the majority of them were all pretty positive about the, the project and we got good comments back on things to consider as part of it, which we're using to help us with designing some of the specifics, even like just ground cover and stuff like that to utilize. So really good feedback on that process. The park board then at their last meeting had more of an open session that Kevin helped get out the word to people that if they wanted to come and talk in person, again at the meeting they'd have an opportunity to, and so they're taking all that then to, with a plan of their July meeting, to make a formal recommendation that would come back to, to you guys, probably that second meeting in July, which would be like July thirtieth.
Get the show on the road.
Yep.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, again, no meeting July second, and we'll be meeting the following.
Sixteenth. July sixteenth.
Sixteenth and thirty, sixteenth and thirtieth, so, all right, entertaining motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Rowe.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Geisler, and we do have an EDA meeting, there'll be a short gap and we will go into the EDA meeting. So all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? We are adjourned, we'll see you in a couple minutes.